I was actually the one talking tonight.
Yeah.
So, let's go ahead and if we all please rise for a moment of silence. Chris, could you lead us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Those chairs down at the bottom here.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the county council to order tonight, Thursday, September 5th. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Oh, roll call.
How many times did I do that?
I don't know. All right.
Ron Bacon, Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstein.
Here.
All right, so we have everyone except for Mr. Bacon who's present. All right, now let's try that again. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from August the 8th, 2024, public hearing, August the 8th as well.
I have one change on pages four and five.
Which minutes, Greg? The regular?
I'm sorry, this is the regular. Is it the regular? Yes, it's the regular meeting. It's when we did the resolution on the township, our departments. On page four, at the bottom, it says Councilman Richmond made the motion to approve the resolution, Ron Bacon seconded. Then on the next page, it says Councilman Bacon had made the motion to approve the resolution, and I seconded it. So I think that part needs to be struck. That's the only thing that I had.
Anyone else? All right, looking for a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Greg.
Second.
And the second by Rob. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. All right, second item on the agenda is additional appropriation, Superior Courts, per DM jury, $15,000. Meals and lodging jury, $1,000. Hello.
Hi, Ellen Sprinkle with the Warwick Superior Court Number One, on behalf of Judge Krista Hamby Wyper, she's unable to be here tonight. It's our second request. We've had many more jury trials this year, and I think she explained where it explains that the cost has doubled. So we're just trying to get ahead of this and to keep from coming back. So we did some averages. We still have seven jury trials on the calendars for the remaining of the year. So if all seven went, even this 15 wouldn't cover it, but that's where we're at.
All right, well, I guess we'll try to get by with that.
Motion approved.
Motion by Greg and the second by Rick. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, additional appropriation, ARPA equipment, $2,500. Hello?
Good evening, Heather Silber, County Administrator. This request is from the ARPA funds for a request that was made by an organization for an AED, that they needed their location. Try cap.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Greg. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And the second by Chris. Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for a motion. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. You gonna be up there for a bit?
Mm-hmm, I'm just gonna stick around.
All right, next item on the agenda is additional appropriation courthouse, grounds and parking, $500, buildings, $8,000.
I've just kind of looked at the spend that we've had so far this year and looking for numbers that would, you know, kind of get us maybe closer to the end of the year with some of the purchases that we've had to make out of that, those funds.
Could you maybe define buildings a little bit more?
That's kind of the, like if they buy parts for to repair something or tools to make the repair, that's most often used by maintenance.
And let me jump ahead to the next one. I hate to do that, but on 3C, there's also a request for general supplies and supplies janitorial. I'm just curious, those don't, the buildings is something specifically?
Yeah, it's more the repairs to the buildings and those, and what they buy to repair them, and we do pay vendors from that as well.
So would this, for future reference, could this possibly be better named like building repair? Would that might work better? Those buildings just seems kind of.
It is very generic.
Yeah, it's very vague. Building repair might sound good, at least I think it might. All right, any discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't want to make all the motions. Come on, somebody.
We can have no more discussion, can't we?
We can have discussions.
Yeah, discussion.
Okay, so what you brought up is like, you know, talking about grounds and parking and building and building maintenance, and then we have these other ones below, which is real similar to what we're doing. It's all kind of the same item, right? Similar, but not?
Similar, but not. So if we want to move down into 3C and discuss those, I mean, that's, so that I can explain those, or do you want to?
I would, I think I would feel more comfortable if we would explain, if we would skip 3B for now, and let's have her explain 3C, and see what we have.
Hey, folks, is that okay if we go ahead and just kind of merge these two into an open discussion? And then we could take each item individually, but if we want to just kind of put them together for an overall?
Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
That'll work.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and open up the floor for discussion on 3B and 3C.
Okay. So the general supplies and the janitorial supplies be in, in 0068, which is the commissioner's budget. That's handling more of the things that we're being, we're paying for animal control now. I mean, we have the general supplies, honestly, we, you know, we will use that for our office as well, but it is taking a bigger hit from animal control. And that's where the janitorial supplies, just to kind of put a line on that, because there are certain items that we have to buy for animal control that does special cleaning. Pro vet logic is the only thing that cleans that prevents parvo. There's just a lot of cleaning supplies that they need, so that's why we want to put that in a line that is dedicated to that, within that budget.
Is, is there a specific line now for that?
We have transferred into it and created a line there just so that we can kind of keep track of the janitorial supplies, yes.
So there is?
There was nothing budgeted to it, no.
Okay, but did we, I'm trying to rack my brain going back for the budget hearings, did we, did you create a janitorial supplies, animal control line?
For next year, yes.
Okay.
So the general supplies and supplies janitorial are pretty well the same thing on this C? It's for, out there, it's animal control.
Yeah, more than anything, more than anything else, yes, absolutely.
Got you.
Do you want to talk about any other one?
Yeah. What about other services and charges, 23,000?
Well, that, that winds up being that very difficult area, that very gray area. I actually created a report of the other services and charges that we've spent for the last three months, just to kind of get an idea. And that's why I want to put some more money in that janitorial supplies, because one of the things that's going on in the other services and charges is buying that Pro Vet Logic and some of those things. But that other services and charges is getting, because we don't have a line for it, and I really, I don't know what we would call it. I think we may have talked about that for next year's budget. But all of the care that's happening for the animals, you know, if they're going and they're getting rabies vaccines, if they're getting medications, when they're going for spay and neuter clinics, cat food, dog food, wormers, you know, all of those pieces that are being purchased, it's, it's kind of falling right there right now because we don't have it all broken out in the budget yet, but that's the goal for 2025, is to have that broken out.
You mentioned, did you say something about paying something pro guard?
Pro vet logic.
What is?
That is the only thing that they're, they can clean out there with. It's very, it's costly, and it also is the only thing that kills parvo, so that's why they use that.
Wasn't familiar with that.
We get it directly from the manufacturer though, so it's not marked up.
So me being simple minded, I'm looking at general supplies, supplies janitorial, and other services and charges as all animal control?
Not all.
Most.
Yeah, largely, absolutely. There's, there's some things in other services and charges, I think, that have gotten paid from other services and charges, maybe because we didn't have the funds in the buildings and the grounds and parking that we had before. There's also vehicle registrations in there.
It's like feed, so this is going to be like feed and veterinarian supplies and all that good stuff is what we're talking about.
Most, a lot of it, yes.
And so until, until 2025, we'll have a line item for this stuff, so we're not going to be asking these questions.
Yes.
I think, correct? Hopefully. Well, I understand.
I'm here for it, whatever you want to talk about.
It takes a lot of money to run animals, and I get it, and feeding a cow is cheaper than a dog nowadays, and you know, and that's, that may sound crazy, but really it is. Time you give it the medicines and this and that, people are spending a ton of money on it, and I get it.
Yeah, it is, it is costly. You know, they, they feed only one kind of food so that it prevents messes, you know, and they don't, they're grain free, you know, and you're right, I mean, it's, and outside of that, I mean, we do have the contract now with the vet, so hopefully that will reduce some of the vet costs that we have, but he's also ordering medication, so you know, it's just, it's all around, it's just.
Is Martin B. doing that then? He's good, okay?
Yeah, he's great.
And Heather, let me ask another question, which I'm hoping your answer is yes, but is there any way, anywhere else we can transfer funds before we ask for additional here?
If, we have transferred to cover here and there, but the only place that we have to transfer from is some of the places that we've already come and gotten additional appropriations, and I don't, I don't want to take away from those places because I feel that we're going to need those funds. The legal services, the contractual services for IT, you know, there's some work being done there. So I don't, I don't, it's just robbing Peter to pay Paul at that point, because I'm going to come, I'm going to need to come back and ask for more at some point, because it's just, taking on a whole nother department has been very taxing on our budget.
And taking on the other department, is that why the communications more, or what's, what's the word with that, 26,900?
Okay, communications, I had thought I'd had that figured out for like how much was coming, you know, as far as the cost for that, cell phones, that, but we pay for, commissioner's office pays for anybody who is in the general fund. And I thought I had a handle on that when I added my budget request. I don't remember what my budget request was versus what was actually approved, to be honest with you. But that's also the telematics devices that are in the vehicles.
There's hotspots, some different things.
Some hotspots, tablets, yeah, things like that.
What company do you go through on that?
Our cell phones are with AT&amp;T, FirstNet. Again, the telematics devices, those are also an AT&amp;T product.
And so then let me ask another question. And you're obviously probably not going to be able to answer this, but the communication question. If I'm not mistaken, like three, four years ago, we were supposed to have been experiencing some increased reduction in costs for telephones based upon a lot of voice over internet protocol stuff and some other items, and I, I don't feel like we've quite, you know, we're seeing those flowers come up out of the ground yet.
I agree, yeah, because the communication is our self, or sorry, our landlines that we still have, which some of those we're just kind of stuck with, that's, you know, dispatch, Scales Lake, and there's a phone at a 4H that we cover. The rest of that is our internet providers, and we're running about $3,000 a month for these two buildings, for our internet, because we're, we're still working on that project to get mainstream installed, but when we do get that done, that, that cost will reduce significantly.
Is there a timeframe when that's estimated, because I feel like this is, that project has been going on for probably longer than at least a couple of years.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say there is, but I don't have the answer to that. I know we have worked with a gentleman with NetSavvy to kind of hammer out any concerns that, now, do we have all the right equipment in place? Do we have everything that we need? And he has made a couple of recommendations, and I think we just kind of need to get everybody back together to make that final call so we can get that installed.
Now, in regards to the cell phones, and please, if I'm dominating the conversation, please, anybody hop in. Are the cell phones due to increased number of cell phones in service, or is this just an increase in cost, or can you kind of walk me through that a little bit?
Yeah, we do have more cell phones, more people have got, have, have cell phones now. We have more, like, again, we pulled in that, the other department, and all of their equipment came with them, and the cost of that equipment. I don't say that we've seen an increase of the cost as far as like a per plan thing, but a larger number of items, and I, maybe just poor math on my part at the beginning of the, when we did budget season last year.
Okay, well, I'm going to make one thing simple out of both of these items. I'm going to make a motion to approve in section 3C, the juvenile detention fund for the $75,900. That is one thing that is really, it's out of our hands, and it's up to the judge and who they send to the juvenile facility. So I'm going to make a motion right now to get that one out of the rest of this discussion and make a motion to approve the juvenile detention.
Second.
So it's a motion by myself, and yes, Greg, I'll make a motion. We'll break, we'll break the string tonight. And a second by Rick, is there any additional discussion on the juvenile detention item? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion for juvenile detention, $75,900, carries six to zero. Okay, all right, so we've got that one out of there. All right, so is there any further discussion for Ms. Silber? I'm going to make a motion to approve supplies janitorial for $2,000. Is there a second? Second by Ted?
Yeah.
I'll call for a vote on that item. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
I understand they need that very badly out there.
All right. I'm either looking for additional discussion or looking for a motion for anything else.
With the general supplies, if that's going to be going for the animals, because number one, I, we're looking at $2,000 for janitorial out there for, if that's going out to the animals too, that ain't going to get them very damn far. I mean, rocket science can figure that out, but I, so if that general supplies at $3,300 is going to be going toward the animal control, I'm, I'm for that, and I'd make a motion for that.
What about the other services and charges?
I just wish other services and charges a little bit more generic, or a little bit more, not as generic, so we would know.
I think, let's, let's get a motion for, he's got a motion on the floor.
So let's do.
General supplies.
Yeah, I'll do a motion for the general supplies at $3,300.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Rob and a second by Rick. I'll call for a vote on general supplies, $3,300. Motion carries six zero.
In this list of stuff you sent me for other services and charges, it looks like the cleaning and the food is included in that amount.
Yes, yeah, right now it is. So I was trying to, trying to break things out a little bit more.
Right. So can we reduce other services and charges by the two amounts we just approved?
Yeah, I mean, you can do.
Yeah, I understand that.
Ted, you do whatever you want.
Animal control in any kind of hardship, you know, I see, I see this list, and it's just a menagerie of everything, I mean.
Yeah.
Toilet seats, litter, postage machine, banker's boxes for files.
It is.
Boiler permit, weed and brush killer, I mean, it's, seems like some of that stuff ought to be in other categories. Trash pickup. Batteries and pins for the commissioner's office. disposal, nevermind, forget that one. Vehicle registrations, doorknobs for purchasing office, I mean, it's just everything. Urenal plug for maintenance.
So Ted, I'm not trying to guide you in a direction, but it sounds like you might be interested in lowering that amount? Or that, not trying to put words into your mouth, but it sounds like maybe that's where we're going, just in the, just in the.
That's my first thought, yeah. It seems like we ought to be able to reduce it by those two figures we just approved.
Where, where was that list at that you're looking at that? Do we have it over here? Did I miss that?
It was emailed.
Email, okay, I read an email, okay.
I also think that's what it, I think that's what you got there.
You've got this.
I know I sent it to you.
Yeah, I didn't print it out.
This one here, I think.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Email, two-page email.
Okay. I'll make a motion on other services and charges to deduct the, at 18,000, I'm just going to say, other services and charges at 18,000. I'll start it somewhere.
Is there's a motion on the floor for $18,000 for the other services and charges line item? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by Rob and a second by Greg. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails?
I need some white outs.
I don't have enough room for all my notes.
You just got to make one step forward, you know, before you can do anything, so let's, let's get going, so.
This is just an estimate of what you need to get through the year, right? Hopefully, because what I'm looking at, it's all past purchases.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that was just to give you an idea of what we've been spending there.
So there's no total on this list of what you've spent since May?
Sorry, I did not. It was that, that, this report that for the other services and charges was roughly 14,000. And that was for three months, so. But again, I mean, there's some things there that should have been paid elsewhere, but it's just we don't have those funds either, so.
Is there, are there any additional, any additional discussion or any additional motions for any of the items in 3B or 3C?
On cell phones, you do handle the sheriff's department, cell phones? No, okay, you said all general fund, I thought that was.
Okay, I did misspeak then, my apologies, yeah.
I think she said general fund, communication, not.
No, no, it's cell phones, it's the, sorry, it's the general fund, yeah.
Because we've added deputies, that's what I thought.
No, my apologies.
That's not there, okay.
Just forget that they're on their island out there on their own.
I'll make another motion on other services and charges, 11,500, which is half, 50% of the 23,000. That's right, because not, they're going to have to, I mean, that's half of it. She's hoping that this is going to get her through the rest of the year, and this will get her a good start.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Rob and a second by Rick to reduce the other services and charges line item to 11,500.
Ted, how much?
11,500.
You need some white out.
Yeah. Did I, did I do my division right?
You did.
All right, good, I went to Sanuson, I know, but.
All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Okay, once again, not to keep prodding, but any additional discussion or additional motions for items?
So we need to talk about grounds and parking and your building, and the maintenance, and I'm guessing that, that is for this building we're sitting in, is that correct? And that's maintenance like for the elevator and all that good stuff?
No, elevator maintenance has its own line.
Okay, it does, all right. Now, is this maintenance going in for the work that they're doing in the basement to get that fixed, or is that another line item?
I don't know where that, I don't know what the total cost is going to be on that, so I don't know what, where that will be able to be paid from.
Is this to repair the two bathrooms for the men's room?
Yeah.
Right now, you got two out of six not working, so that's not a passing grade.
Jay Shekel is on alert, and they're going to be here next week.
All right, I'm going to make a motion on, on this, on B, with the additional appropriation of grounds and parking and buildings of $4,000, which is a little under half to go until they can have a little bit more of a specific plan of what we need to spend money on.
Is that buildings? Are both grounds and parking and buildings that?
Grounds and parking and buildings, I'm just going to put.
We can't, it's two different lines.
Two different lines? Okay, I'm sorry, I restrict my, restrain my motion.
Retractor.
Retract my motion, yes.
So could I perhaps, do you want to rephrase that and perhaps put grounds and parking at 500 and buildings at 3,500?
That would be great, thank you.
I'll let you go ahead and say that.
Well, okay, so we'll do the grounds and parking at 500 and buildings at 3,500.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for $500 for grounds and parking and $3,500 for building. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second by Ted. I'm sorry, that motion was by Rob, my bad, apologize. All right. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Okay, there are three remaining items in 3C. Do we have any action on those, one way or the other, or?
So what are the three? We've got gas, oil, communications and?
Cell phone.
Cell phones.
That's correct.
The gas oil lube solely for animal control?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's cut the dog's tail off one inch at a time, right?
Yeah.
How about gas, oil and lube, motion to approve 12,000, $1,250?
We have a motion on the floor by Chris to approve the $1,250 for gas, oil and lube. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a second by Rob. All those in favor? Motion carries five to one, and the one opposed is Rick. All right, two items left. Are we taking any action on communication or cell phone line items? Are we taking any action on communication or cell phones?
Motion to deny.
A motion on the floor by Rick to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And there's a second by Ted. All those in favor of denying the communication and cell phone items? All those in favor of that motion? All those. This, are you?
To deny it?
Yeah, so, so all those.
Opposed to deny.
All those opposed to denying, okay. So motion to deny carries four to two, and those opposed are Greg and Brad.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. I think that was like denying a negative or something. I don't know what we did.
Okay, can I, can I say something after that, or can we do a little bit of talking or discussion? No?
Not to cut you off, but if it won't be too long, I'll give you a couple minutes.
All I want is, I'd just like to have more specifications, you know, on the communication and cell phone. I'd like to have more on paper detail. And, and that, that's where I'm at, and that's the reason why that happened. I'm not denying, but we need a little bit more information. That's all I want.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Sure. All right, next item on the agenda, additional appropriation PSLIT for rent, $9,500.
Motion approved.
Add your name, please.
Heather Soper, Kennedy Administrator.
I second.
There's a motion by Greg and a second by Rob. And just to be clear, that is the rent for the EMS station?
Yep, where we have ambulances. That's enough to get the contracts paid the rest of the year.
How many months is this for?
Of course you're asking me that. It's what, what we need to pay any rents that we have do the rest of the year, so it would get us through.
Just, that's the rent for EMS?
Yeah, for where the ambulances are.
Right.
Yeah, and that's at Newburgh on Ohio Township. There's two in Ohio Township and then one over here, yeah.
Still find the irony of us paying rent to store our EMS vehicles. I just, I don't feel the appreciation. Looking for any additional discussion before. All those in favor?
Do we have a motion?
Uh, yes, we had a motion by Greg and Rob. Sorry, I did actually write that down. I think I may have even said it, Rick. I'm, I'm gonna stand firm on that one. Uh, so we had a motion by Greg and a second by Rob. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five one, and the one opposed is myself. All right, next item on the agenda, local health department trust contractual services, $80,822.
Marlon Wiseite, the health department, here for Debbie Bennett tonight. She couldn't make the meeting, but when she filled that out and asked for that amount, she didn't know what next year's budget is. Of course, none of us do for sure yet, but to get us through rest of the year, 28,000 would get us through rest of the year if you just wanna handle that. Did you get her email where she sent out?
Yes, I made copies.
I got copies of it if you needed, but. And it's where, you know, 1168 and 1206 is a fund that's basically gonna go away, but she was just wanting to get a transfer tonight, but we can come back at a later date and do that if we could just get the 28,000 approved tonight to handle Dr. Heinrich's salary for rest of the year.
Did the council ever approve that hour? Did we ever approve?
As far as I know, Rick, I thought it all was approved.
Well, the council doesn't approve the contract.
The contract, the commissioners did and the health board, but yeah.
So to, to expand on your question that, that item was not brought to us before the contract was signed. I believe that may have been what you're asking.
Yeah.
Not to put words into your mouth.
No, that's. Yeah.
Just, that was the clarification I just wanted to provide to you. All right, any addition? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the 28,000, reduce the 822 to 28,000 and have them come back.
There's a motion on the floor by Ted to approve the $28,000 that was reduced, or reduced to the $28,000. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And there's a second by Greg. All those in favor? Motion carries, are all those opposed? Motion carries four to two. Those two opposed are myself, Brad Overton and Rick B.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marlon.
And I'm, and I'm gonna expound just a little bit. I mean, I think I don't, I'm not trying to speak for Rick, but I just, it really would have been nice if there could have been some collaboration on that and some discussion amongst everyone, because the contract, I, I don't know, I just, my words escaped me on that, so. Next item on the agenda is item number five, additional appropriation, clean drain, $30,000.
Hello, everyone. Jason Baxter with the Worth County Surveyor. Here for appropriation of $30,000 for additional cleanup drains.
And this is out of clean drain, so. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oops, sorry, sorry. It's been a little confusing tonight. Looking, is there a motion on the floor?
I was gonna make a motion to, uh, do the contractual services at $30,000 for the clean drain.
There's a motion on the floor by Rob to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Chris. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, additional appropriation utilities, jail.
Sheriff Mike Wilder. We're just asking for an appropriation, hope to get us to the end of the year. Uh, I'll be honest, I'm probably gonna be back in front of you. I hope that amount gets us there, but we just, we'd already put this request in. We just received our wastewater bill and water bill from the city of Boomville. It was up $2,000. So, you know, when we're doing the math, if it stays that way, we may, we may be back. I'm probably gonna be back in front of you also for meals. We are currently running, part of the reason I think utilities is up is we're running over 130 inmates right now. That's, that's what we were pre-COVID, you know, close to that number, so we're busting at the seams. We're only 121 beds, so we're uh, meals and probably water usage, food stuff, it's just, it's where we're at. So I hope not to be, but there's just a good chance we'll be back in front of you again.
She actually sent a request for meals today.
Today, but it will be on the next one, yeah. So we'll definitely be back, so, but hoping this gets us through to the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the 26,000.
Motion on the floor by Rob and a second by Rick to approve the $26,000. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. Your optimism was very, was very unappreciated there, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda is discussion from the Newburgh Chandler Library.
Good evening, Trista Smith, Newburgh Chandler Public Library. We are here just to give you some information about a project that we'd like to do. We are coming off of a bond, and so we're looking to keep the tax rate stable and do some work at our main branch and at our downtown branch. And while I am an expert on libraries, I'm not an expert on buildings, so I have a great group of people here to answer any questions that you may have. We're just here to give you information tonight, answer any questions. You should have gotten some information in your packet about the project, and then we're also all available to meet anytime, to go over, show you kind of the problems that we're dealing with and answer any further questions that you have. So I will, if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them, but otherwise, I will turn it over to Jack Faber, who is the main architect.
Well, you know, I, let me ask, just, just so we can kinda get this on the record. As far as, just so the public knows as well, but the majority of these upgrades or changes or where are they, are they going to be occurring at the library behind, in the Hardee's area yet?
Yeah, yeah. We, that building is just now reaching 20 years old, and so a lot of the infrastructure is at, what, end of life? Is that what they call it? The HVAC system, the roof, all of those things are starting to fail. We've seen increased maintenance costs. I think last year we paid $50,000 just in HVAC repairs, and I guess that system, I did include a letter from a man who actually has worked on the system since it was installed, and basically, when they installed it, they thought it was this really cool new thing, and they, it didn't really take off, and so most of the parts and pieces are obsolete. They're kind of Mickey Mouse-ing things together, and we, we still, we have a lot of, like, the damper in one of our meeting rooms is, has been broken for several months. They're just hoping that a part will come available on eBay, kind of a thing. And we've dealt with kind of a lot of that over the last couple of years.
Do you get part notifications for eBay on your phone? That's probably not a good thing. Okay, I just kinda wanted to get that out, so just we can kinda get that out for the public, so, yep.
I'm Jack Faber with Hifer and with Trista not being an architect, she did a pretty good job answering those questions. It's my understanding that you received a copy of our assessment in your documents. The, the big thing to take away from, from the document really is what Trista said, was that building's 20-ish years old, 20 years old, and really has had very little improvements done to it. It's, it's really two projects. It's not just the Bell Road Library, but it's also the, the Newburgh Library, and just like anything, upkeep is important, and the furniture has not been updated since the library was first built. Finishes, there have been, there have been some improvements from lighting, but really the big thing is that the two big items are the roof, which is still original to when the building was built, and like she had said, the, the unique heating cooling system at, at the Bell Road, that they have reached their lifespan, and if they're not addressed, there's going to be some problems. The, the Newburgh Library is smaller scale as far as the work being done. The main thing there is really, there's a, there's a recess in the floor. Means it's not an accessible space. We'd like to fix that so the whole library is accessible and take care of finishes as well, because those have not been updated since the new library was built as well, so. To, just like what Trista said, if anybody has any questions, and, well, if anybody has questions now, I'd be happy to do my best to answer, but if anybody would like to tour through it or see the problems, we'd definitely be happy to do that.
The Bell Road Library, the solar panels did not work anymore at all, do they?
Do you wanna take that? Well, we can. They, they, they are functional.
They still do the, the hot water, right?
Yeah, let me get, this is Dempson Haney, the project architect actually, who is closer involved on it.
So at the Bell Road, there were two solar systems, one for water and one for electric. The water we eliminated when we did the renovation a few years ago, because it was no longer working, we switched to electric water heaters. The solar power system has been fixed to the point that now they can get their credits back, but it still has some issues that we would like to upgrade on that system. And then another thing that hadn't been touched base is the downtown Newburgh Library. Another big aspect is their historical archives has no heating or cooling. It relies on one return air duct in the room and for the conditioned air to just come through the door. So they have no way of controlling humidity or temperature control in that space, and that's part of this project is to install a standalone system that can control heating, air and humidity just for the archives room.
One thing Dempson did just say is we did do a very small renovation to the Bell Road Library, and there was some minor work, roof repairs to it, but those were because of emergency, there were leaks that needed to be addressed, and so it was a Band-Aid. At this point, the Band-Aid and everything else is at, is an issue.
What kind of roof are you gonna put on there?
It is a membrane roof now. One of the issues is the building has salt toots, clear story windows. We'll also do some slight modifications to get that water to drain better away from that salt tooth and help eliminate some of those leaks, which is right over the stacks. I know a few years ago, they did have some roof leaks that literally just ruined a whole stack of books. I mean, they just had to toss them out. It was so bad. They've had some water damage down walls through the kids' area and the teens' area. They've since stopped those leaks for now, but we still have like tiles missing, things like that from where we had water running down, down the walls.
So the work is really to repair the roof, but ultimately it's to protect everything that's inside.
Is this bond issue the same amount as the earlier one, or is this just a smaller amount since the other one might have been a big one?
It's, I, I, we actually have our municipal advisor. Is that what they, if, if Jeff bring him together with Baker Tilly is here, he can go over the structure of the payments and stuff like that.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I've brought some hard copies with me in case you do not have this information available to you. What, what I can speak to this evening is just some of the financial parameters being considered with the project, so it's important to note that at this point in the project planning phase, these are estimates, and we've established, or we're working to establish some maximum parameters that would then be in resolutions to be adopted and considered later. So I will talk through just a little bit of information here relating to the library in general in terms of their existing bond payments, and then how this project could overlay and, and really help replace the payments that are maturing on their existing bonds. So if you look at page two of the packet I just handed out, this just represents the current bond issue that the library has in place. Those were issued in 2020.
Could I just stop it for just a technical reason? Could, I think we might need to get your, everybody's names again. I don't think we've got everything recorded, so I apologize before you get too far into your discussions, so.
Trista Smith.
Jack Faber with Hifer.
And Dempson Haney with Hifer.
And I'm Jeffrey Hammond with Baker Tilly.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Sorry about that, but, okay.
No, on, on page two, this, we're just looking at the library's existing bond that was issued in 2020, and you can see the annual payments associated with that current bond issue, and those bonds are fully repaid after the year 2025. Those were originally issued in the par amount of $2,665,000 in 2020.
What was that amount again?
$2,665,000.
Thanks.
So moving to page three, I'll, I'll be very brief with this. This is essentially the data we looked at on the prior page, but in a chart format, so you can see there is a step down in payments in 2025, and here in a couple of pages, I'll kinda illustrate how these bonds being considered now can take advantage of that step down with the goal of keeping the tax rate consistent from year to year. Page four, I will be very brief here. This is the, the mechanism of the bonding being considered by the library is a general obligation bond, so I've just included for reference the general obligation bonding capacity of the. So I've just included for reference the general obligation bonding capacity of the library to see that it is an amount, in an amount that can support the proposed project. The current general obligation bonding capacity is a little over $17.3 million for the library as of today. So on the next page, on page five, this is just a few repayment, potential repayment scenarios for a project like this. Again, we're, we're very early in the planning process. Whenever we arrive at the parameters that will ultimately populate the resolution, we build in conservative interest rates to establish those because at that point, they are maximum or not to exceed numbers. So the actual numbers can always be less than those, but they cannot exceed the numbers that are in those resolutions. So we're looking at a borrowing amount to fund the proposed project of $5,650,000. That would generate about 5.4 million to go towards the hard and soft construction costs of the project. The difference between that borrowing amount and the proceeds available is just, if you've issued a bond before, there are what's called cost of issuance associated with those. The bank that actually provides the funding, there's a spread there. So we're factoring in that, again, using conservative estimates with these numbers. We've looked at two potential repayment scenarios. And no, the, the final bonds do not need to take the form of either one of these, but we've just provided these kind of for consideration. The first looks at repaying the bonds just over 12 years. A borrowing of this size with keeping the tax rate and the payments consistent with where they've been in the past. This is about the minimum that it would need to be to re, to make these payments and to keep them consistent would be a little over 12 years. We've also included a 20-year repayment scenario or just under 20 years because in the state of Indiana, you can go up to 20 years for a bond issuance. So we've also provided that kind of as two bookends for where ultimately the repayment term may come in. We've included interest expense associated. That would be over the lifetime of each of these scenarios. And again, we're using conservative interest rates at this point in time. We amortize these bonds at 5% interest. We're seeing in the market today rates in the low fours. So these estimates on interest expense are conservative at this point in time. Again, because it populates those potential parameters that are not to exceed amounts. And then lastly, we've included some maximum annual payments. Under each of these scenarios, those payments are the same. That maximum payment would be just over $676,000, which if you reference back to page two, that very closely corresponds with the library's existing bond payments on their 2020 bond issue. The next two pages, I, I will be very brief with these. This is just simply an illustration of what each of these repayment scenarios could look like. The darker blue color are the existing bond payments on the 2020 bonds. The yellow represents the proposed payments or what could be the payments on a bond issued in 2024. There is a slight increase in 2025. However, the library's budget is within the 4% growth quotient. And given the net assessed value growth of the library's taxing district, we would expect that if the budget grows by 4%, that the library would still see a reduction in their tax rate because that assessed value growth is higher than what they would be growing their budget by. And then lastly, I'll direct you to page eight. This is just a schedule of the library's tax rate, both in their general fund and on their bond payments dating back to 2016. And just wanted to show how the tax rate has dropped over that time period. That is largely due to net assessed value of the library increasing, whereas their payments on bonds have remained the same. And when that happens, the way that the tax rate's calculated, if assessed value is increasing and payments remaining the same, the tax rate will drop over time. Are there any questions I can help answer as it relates to the proposed financing structure?
Any questions about the structure of the bond itself? I think, I think you may be off the hook. Does anybody have any additional questions? Just concerning the overall project, if nobody else has one, I'll ask. So, I mean, obviously, this amount has increased from the project in Chandler. If this, the 5.6 million, and I understand that you're keeping the payments the same. I can see that, but it is an increased amount. So as far as necessities, I understand you have to maintain structures and maintain HVAC and those things. So out of this 5.6, how much of that is, I need to have it or we're going to cause problems? And, or, and how much of it is, because this is the same question that I asked, you know, a few years back. And nobody really had any answers for that either. Turned down like six to one. But I'm just curious though, is how many of these are the necessities? And how many of these are, you know, are peripheral types of things? I mean, because I'm all about maintaining structures and keeping things up. And I, so I'm ju, I'm just curious, where's that line at? Because that is a huge jump from the 2.6 to the 5.6.
Like, I, I will say the HVAC system alone is about one and a half to $2 million. There is very little in there that is optional, I guess, or, or.
I mean, I guess I'm looking at it between have-tos and want-tos is my, my contingency.
So, so we.
No, I'm talking about like have-to, like I have to buy a car, but I would have to go buy a Mercedes Benz.
Yeah, yeah. You're asking the exact question that we were, we were challenged with through this whole process. And really, when, when you look at the, the last couple of pages of the document, it, it outlines these items. And really, the, the site items, a lot of those are, they would be really great. Okay, really where the needs are, are the interior of it and the, the roof and the mechanical system. So, but there are problems with the, the site items have to do with the, the erosion of the sides of the lake that's there, the, the water feature there. So, but we, we've really tried to eliminate any, like, they're not really wishes. I mean, the furniture has been there for 20 years and, and they've done an amazing job caring for it, but it's only, it's only going to last for so long. So if you're asking, is everything 100% on this list absolutely necessary? Or it will fail? We could probably find some priorities to this and, and really give you a better answer. But we, we've gone through the exercise and we really believe that these are things that, for the success of both libraries, they really need to be done.
Okay, I just, I, and not to necessarily put you on the spot, but I think it's a good idea because, you know, it, it's hard for people to get into some discussions and even from at the library perspective. So I think it's good since we're broadcasting things, it's just for you, for your, for your sake as well, to get your argument out and your, you know, to, to put this forward, so.
And I, I appreciate that. One thing I didn't mention that when you, when you're on each of the cost summaries, we did actually include some optional items that would actually, in some cases, reduce costs. It would be a change to reduce costs or something additional if those funds were available. It would be helpful, but it's not absolutely necessary. So we did try to, I should have started with that. We did outline some of those things.
Yeah, I just got, I just kind of wanted to get that out and just make sure we're not on a more of a wish than a need.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we're pretty close on the need side.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, if, if one or any of us wanted to come and, and take it to, or should we just drop in? Do we, do we want to set up a meeting? Who should I contact?
So I'm going to answer that if you don't mind. I think the best thing would be to, to not have, I think you would contact Trista. She would make us aware of it so we could be there because I think it'd be very helpful if we walk through with you to be able to give an explanation and answer questions that she may not be able to answer. And we'll make ourselves available as best we can to fit whatever your schedule is.
Chris would sign a waiver to just take a set of keys and walk.
I will leave that up to Trista.
Have remind me what is a library.
Yeah.
I've actually been to them, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I did send an email out when, when we sent this up for the packet. It's to all of the council members offering to, to me. So, so you should have my email, but if for any reason you don't, you can give the library a call or it's on the website, all of that. But yeah, email, give me a call. We're happy to set something up and walk through. You know, like he said, I could show you where the water damage is. He briefly mentioned the erosion around the pond. That really is dangerous, quite frankly. And it's, that one unfortunately is not something we have a, a super easy fix for. So it is, again, all of these things unfortunately are, are not small, small pieces. You know, it's not like we can just pay a couple thousand dollars and have someone un-erode our pond. If that was a thing, that would be wonderful. And, and the additional issue with that is it's a retaining pond for all of the properties around us. And so we, we can't just do whatever we want to, and it does have to go through a process. And so it is just all of these things that, you know, we do, we really try to take care of the library. We just, we just put a new fence around our chiller and we're getting a new backdrop. Like, we use our operating fund to do these smaller things, you know, to, to try to maintain the library, reupholstering the furniture, doing all those things. But these are really items that are, that are just so large. Our operating budget cannot do it.
Which makes sense.
But yeah, definitely just contact me.
Just reach out to you.
Yes.
And then Matt, if we were to do that, would, is, can more than three go? Or should we keep it at three?
In excess of that, it could be considered a meeting.
Okay, just wanted to clarify again.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it, appreciate it. So Chris, if you're going to go on it too, make sure you go through the library and make sure no one's checking how many books. Could be one of us.
Do they still rent or loan out VHS? I shouldn't have asked that question.
All right, next item on the agenda is handbook policy reimbursement, transfers or corrections. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted under one motion. So I'll read through these. Item 8A is a area plan transfer contractual services, equipment maintenance and furniture, $500. I'm sorry, I should have read the amounts. $500 contractual services, 1,000 for equipment maintenance, furniture $1,500. Transfer in health, travel $242, to refunds $242. And commissioners transfer from other contractual services $7,235 to HVAC system, county-owned buildings, $7,235. Let me ask a question though about HC. Did we, am I mistaken or didn't we cover the HVAC last month?
We did.
And was that transferring into that item? And, and what's your name again?
Sorry, Heather, County Administrator. We did a transfer of the same type last month, but we've had another repair. And I've, I've only been transferring enough to cover the exact amount of the repairs. So trying not to, I don't know. I, I'm trying to transfer rather than ask for additional appropriations in that area because we do have some funds at 1138 that I can move around.
So I guess the other, I guess if the air conditioner's not working, you.
Sounds like a money pit.
Probably need to fix that. All right.
The furniture from area plan, it just had a bunch of new furniture.
Oh, it's, it's a filing cabinet. It's, yeah. She, she actually sent the, the bid and, and everything that they received. So it's a filing cabinet.
All right, looking for a motion or any other additional discussion?
Motion.
There's a motion on the floor by Greg. And the second by Rick. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero. All right, auditor business, outstanding transactions list. Got no action required.
I think the auditor is just obligated to make sure that you have a, a copy of the outstanding transaction list.
Oh, I see.
But there is no action required by the county council.
Thank you. Council business, recorder perpetuation ordinance correction?
Yes, when we read the ordinance, we read 2025 dash zero one. Read 2024 dash zero one. So I need you to clarify that for the, for the record.
Okay, I'll make a, I guess that is a motion.
I'll second.
I'll make a motion to clarify that and change that ordinance for the recorder perpetuation fund to 2024 dash zero one instead of 2025 dash zero one. There's a motion on the floor by Brad.
I'll second.
Can you maybe state that this is for all the stuff for 2025 or?
So a lot of things in there read 2025, so we want to make sure that those are changed to 2024.
No, no, a lot of them said 2024. Let's just say there was a lot of stuff in there. So just that it's for the 2025 budget.
Correct.
So those, those can be corrected.
I said it backwards.
This is to correct any typographical errors that misread the year from 2024 to 2025.
Perfect.
And I still second that, Brad. I just want to be.
Looking for a, looking for a vote, are all those in favor? I don't know what it is. Anyway, motion carries six zero. HC, is there a second, third, fourth page? And sign in. Oh, was there something else? Oh, there was something else, wasn't there?
Brad has left.
Bingham, yeah. Oh, that was the conflict, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, you guys are needing to accept his conflict of interest statement.
Something that specifically calls this out on here so I can be more specific.
It just says conflict of interest. Maybe you don't have a copy of the.
I think I saw it somewhere. This is a, there's a notice to accept the conflict of interest statement from Bradley J. Bingham.
And what's the conflict?
He's on the library board and he's floating the bond.
Okay.
He's on the library board and he's a part of the legal fee that will be floating the bond as well. Do we vote on this or is it just?
We had to agree to accept it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think it'd be easier for him to resign from the library board.
Conflict of interest is a conflict of interest, isn't it?
I guess that's beyond our power.
Looking for a motion to accept the conflict of interest statement.
So move.
Motion by Greg. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carries four to two. And the two opposed are Ted and Brett.
Had to make us aware of it.
Okay. Looks like the item on the sign-in sheet, speaker is Debbie Stevens. Item to be discussed is health business.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Debbie Stevens, Work County resident. I have, as the auditor, I experienced more than once the commissioners entering into contracts, contractual agreements that they had not come to this board for funding for. And I don't understand why it can, the behavior continues. They've, it's become like a normal thing now. And my request is to this board to stop it, to stop. And my request is to this board to stop it, to stop funding their contractual obligations. You're you're obligating the taxpayers to something that you never even saw before the contract was entered into. And I can remember, you know, that people had to come to this board with their contracts and have discussion about it. And that was the proper checks and balances of local government that protects the taxpayers is for this board to vet in advance what the money is going to be spent on. And then the appropriation is given, and then they can enter into their contract with the money already to back it up. As a taxpayer, I am not obligated to pay to, for my tax dollars, to pay the commissioners contracts that they're entering into. If this board disagrees with it, then please stop funding these things. They can be responsible personally for paying those contracts. But to say, oh, well, they'll just, you know, whoever's entered into this contract, they'll just sue the county and they'll get their money. That's not true. And so I'm here tonight to plead with this board to work for me and work for the taxpayers in Warwick County and stand up to this kind of thing that's been going on for quite a while. It happened with, it was a $12,000 increase to a salary that was in the salary ordinance. And that was decided by this board. And then it was all of a sudden a contractual agreement, we have to pay it. That that's not how it is. That's, I mean, the the way government works for the people is for this board, you all, to stop the stuff from happening. And so there were two, there were two items in this meeting tonight, the this contractual services with the health board. And I don't understand, well, for one thing, a contract for the medical director. How much did we pay Dr. Yeager?
$25,000.
$25,000 a year.
No, we paid him $12,000 a year.
$12,000, that's more like it. And so now we're in a con, we're in a contract, so I don't understand it. The commissioners are not your bosses, and you're not subject to them. And you don't have to fund their wishes if they're not going through the proper checks and balances and segregation of duties that protect the taxpayers. As it is, they can write contracts from now till the end of the year to to obligate the taxpayers to all kinds of insanity. And this this independent contract for $3,000 a month, that's on top of what already? This independent contractor, this is the second independent contract that's being entered into by the same person. I'm just, I just want you guys to be transparent. And and if you're going to vote for something and fund it, at least tell tell us, the taxpayers, what it's for. This independent contractor with this contract will be over $100,000 a year. But no one seems to be moved by that. I don't understand it. And basically, the what's in that contract is the auditor's job. And we have an elected official who, by the state of Indiana constitution, has duties, statutory duties to do those things. And then we have commissioners coming in and hijacking the duties of the county auditor with an independent contractor. I don't understand that. I don't understand.
Debbie, I appreciate your comments.
Yes, I could go on for a good while.
So I think we probably, I appreciate your input there, so.
Well, if you need encouragement, I know there's, you know, a thousand taxpayers who will encourage you. They'll be on your side, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I'm very passionate about it. Sorry. I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I want you to know that. I just want you to know that you have the support of Warwick County to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Any council members have anything additional? All right. I have a motion to adjourn, and I'll make a second.
Second.
All those in favor, looks like that's everyone. All right. We have one more meeting.